Computers and stuff, so I think we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We do have a forum. First thing on the agenda is to approve the meeting agenda for today. I need to first, then a second.
I'll make an approval.
Second, okay, all in favor? Right. Okay. Moving on to item four. Is there's no. There's no public. There's no public, right? The library board of trustees annual report, is this the report you used to give to the city and then the city said they didn't care about it?
This report has a long and storied history, and I'm gonna be totally honest in why it's back in the packet.
Okay.
Because them have been beautifully going through all policies as part of her new being newer her position. And in some policy, it said that we we submit this every year, but we can't remember which policy it was in. So I, last year, I did a lot of legwork with the city, be like, do you need this? They also said, no. So we're not exactly sure where and what, but because it is an active policy that we both saw. We are bringing it back.
Well, I appreciated it. I mean, I I enjoyed reading it.
I seeing everything.
Even though it's supposedly our report and we didn't do the work, but.
So we went back and looked at some sort of, in the sort of farther distance past. Documents, love this document, because I feel like I had kind of gotten us off. I got more into are they library gold, are they board gold, or who's book gold are they? So we tried to craft this more like the the earlier versions. And I think that this to me feels more probably like it's supposed to be than the last couple that I've brought to the table. And my hope would be that maybe that 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 means that will resonate more with this group, but there'll be maybe fewer meetings that we have to go through with it. But we don't have to, we've got plenty of time. So the the whole we were getting more together, kind of going through what we thought would be board level. Accomplishments and then thinking about the goals for the coming year. So I I'm totally open to whatever process the board wants to take with this, whether you want to read it now. Do work between meetings, give feedback now, have us bring another draft back. Whatever that looks like to get to something that feels like you're ready to approve it.
I have a quick question, and I've been working on these for years, so I I know how this works. But when you said we're to submit this and we don't know where we're submitting it to and who's the recipient?
I think.
I'm not sure why we're doing this. One thing we say we're doing it for our own record keeping so that we have a history, but when we say we're doing it for submission.
I think it goes to finance, but.
The city finance?
City finance. And that's where it used to go to go in the old version.
It's interesting that we would target to whoever the audiences that we're submitting to. And if it's finances, this is the information they want, or do they want financial information?
I think you just want the finance because they're the ones that put together the bucket book. And if you think you're.
It's a state requirement for board trustees to submit some sort of report to the city that the.
That's right. Okay, that's who, okay. Well, you would think the city would know, right?
There've been a lot of staff changes over there.
And I don't think it's a bad thing if it does show up on the website under the board. I mean, I don't.
But then the audience is public.
If it's, if if this is indicative of what the report could look like, I mean, I I I appreciate the work that went into it. But it's not pages and pages and agonizing over the goals for next year. I mean. Was it a lot of work? I guess that's the question.
No, I mean, I would say it was, it was all of us in a room thinking about it, but it didn't. It actually was kind of a fun conversation, what you're thinking about, what would rise to this level and what would be. What would be the board's thought. So I think that, no, the work that's going into it so far has been, have been fine. And we're, like I said, absolutely happy to take feedback and. Keep trying to get it closer to what, if there are changes that we want to make, that's fine. Bring it back to your smoke.
Are we talking about item four under goals to set? To develop a plan for, because it's always been all the discussions so far to the city. But this also includes a Johnson County Board of Supervisors.
Can we do reports?
Yes, so that would be one of the. Goals, we talked about it in the past of having a more formalized way to to sort of share our work with the board of supervisors. So because we've talked about it, but we haven't taken a lot of action, I thought, we thought there was a goal would be at least get it back on our radar and. More likely to to actually get a, give a plan.
We have before presented before the board.
Yes.
Supervisors, and we've tried to make it into an annual thing or a special event. Like educational issue saying, we're going to go after a bookmobile, and here we go, we brought the trustee saying like, this is what we're gonna be doing, but. Depends on, there was a rhythm for that we started, but then COVID disrupted so much.
Yeah, because we went to one together.
We went to a show with Susan, so I'm the county representative from the board supervisors and. We, I went every year and talked to them about something, but Susan and I would go together because they might have questions, and Cara usually was. And then when you came in, it's just, I think COVID disrupted our momentum.
That's what.
All about these issues.
So we could go just go back to that model.
Yeah, we asked just be on the agenda and kind of gave an update, and so this is, these are the new initiatives and. Because it acknowledges their funding, their contribution, and sometimes it's proactive for us to let them know what we're doing. So they ask us the questions before they come to the conclusions.
And one way to do to sort of prompt that for everybody would be to put it on the.
Right, whatever they think would be appropriate, yeah, whatever.
Then it would remind us to prepare that report.
They're usually very appreciative. I mean, they kind of surprised that we do it, but.
Well, I think a lot of the fact that we don't know where this is supposed to go, that is a pretty good goal for next year.
I'm comfortable with.
I I'm comfortable with. The accomplishment, I think we didn't include here, and I, I maybe it was the year before, and I'm missing my church, but time freeze up. But we did some exploration of usage patterns and I'm defining inequities and usage. We did that in relationship to the the fine issue, but I think it matches the city's goals of. Looking at some of that, was that within this calendar year?
I was shut it up, so it had to have been.
Yeah.
December, and I looked at.
Yeah, you looked at.
Some, it wasn't the first iteration of the map, like a hotspot.
Yeah, like. I saw that and so that we were.
Had to happen this year every time I went.
Could be a way of adding that to the complex work.
You're right. Analysis or exploration or discussion of. Inequitable usage patterns or access patterns. I think it was usage parents with the goal of access, looking at access issues. I think the staff carried a lot of that, but it was at least a good discussion for the board.
Yeah, we could add that, so something about analysis of inequitable use of patterns. With the goal of moving deep blocks.
Right, or or at least acknowledging the barriers that we may be responsible for, like, like, or do find issues.
Okay, you could add that number one.
But I, you know, it's only if you know it's in this calendar year, but, but people can remember it, then I had to.
Yeah, and I started in December, so it had to have been.
Did we also state the advocacy for? The advocacy letter that we did. About.
To. Saving of support of intellectual freedom on behalf of the library board.
Okay. So. This requires a vote. It says board action required. Are we ready to vote to approve it or not? Okay. All in favor of accepting the FY twenty two board annual report, need a motion with the adjustment made that, that's sorry.
I'm moving the meeting along.
We often need a movement in the second.
Okay, I need a motion to to approve the FY twenty two board annual report.
I'll move to approve it with the edit that we discussed second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Sorry, Carol.
No, thank you. Okay, strategic plan review. I bet this was more work.
Yeah, so it's always fun to have a chance to. For the board to take a look at. There's probably nothing too surprising on the planet at this point, since we're moving into our third year with it. I I do think it's important at the annual updates to include the the full plan, which can buy up to the savings, right? At the time, so that's in case you felt like, no, you've got a good handle on what's up to it, you just want to read the the newer edited. So this is always a group effort. We, this is the first year we tried doing the quarterly updates. So this might be left as like a big reveal in other years, but probably nothing that she hasn't at least heard about or working on. And we're really trying to sort of move away from a few good plan that feels like a checklist and focus on those. The older, the bigger projects, so. It might, it might feel a little different than other years, but we're trying to do it systematically. And I, when I was putting it together, I felt like, again, just so proud of what the staff has continued to do through. All of the aisles and and the reasons that have come up. I I feel proud of it. I I shared it with the staff and just provided them all the amazing work that's been done. And I hope that they share that pride and recognize how much they've done and contribute. But we're absolutely open to any questions or thoughts about.
There is small clarifying question when in goal one, number two, that migrate the digital history project. It's talking about a new public facing website. Is that, that's just a website for that digital history project, like it's like.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
And one of the, one of the things I was attempting to do going through this iteration, at the last big update, we got some board feedback. Just encouraging some removal of guardian and to really kind of make it. Sort of a non-library person could read and understand, or anything you notice like that that we can keep clarifying, keep working on, making it clear, we love that feedback.
Well, as a newbie here, I had a lot of questions because I didn't know what other things were. The digital history project, I have no idea what that is, but it's being migrated. I it's, I don't know, you can't explain everything, but. I had that and also low contact printing. I don't know what the low contact printing is. Although everybody else may know it.
It's just our way of saying, we don't want to have to tuck into the same stuff, really. I think it was developed during, when we were just reopening from COVID, some of the old printing days, you might have to pass off your library card or share materials like that.
Yeah.
Right, Jason, we went down to a more three-wound process.
And it's since, I mean, we're still in COVID, high COVID, but.
Yeah.
But we are, I started spinning that off to mean just even meaning low contact of like less staff interaction. So we're sort of still running with the idea of making it more, less about the COVID and more about just like salt service.
Well, I think a lot of businesses do the same thing now, right? That's their thing, you know, no contact ordering and. So somebody want to give an overview of the digital history project, heard John?
So the digital history project is a website that posts photographs or documents of Iowa City or Democratic County history. It started out as a collaboration between the Johnson County Historical Society and us. We digitize some of the materials that they had in hand about downtown Iowa City. We expanded that to other partners as well. It's an old website, like it's a very old infrastructure in the back and it's it's really complicated. Some of those images that we have might be a whole city directory. It's taking some time to get things to start working and owner. So what we're trying to do with the new website is to make it browsable, more searchable, easier to navigate when you're in a more like larger image or larger. Item, so we're hoping that by migrating our website into a new system, backend system, that we can add. Four more things from our archives as well, that will be a little bit more sophisticated.
And how about the digitized newspapers? Are they there too, the local ones, or are they separate?
There are separate websites because we, we pay the company to do that. We might add more now that some of those years have gotten anything. We have a historical Iowa City newspaper website that we're digitizing newspapers in Iowa City that are out of copyrights and moving along.
Any other questions, Jen?
I can't really see it. I began on there a lot, especially with hearing about your promises of better accessibility, that's.
Yeah, I know, or we're overhauling everything, including search terms, metadata signs.
Yeah.
Did you have other questions, Jen?
Other questions?
Oh, I did have.
Okay.
I think the question is, who's the audience for this? And that's what the, you don't need to, presumably for this group now, I've heard what a digital history program is and why it's being migrated. But you know, if this is for the public, you need to have some. On these particular kinds of issues, need to have some brief explanation of what it is. But if it's an internal document, you don't, but I'm not quite sure what the purpose of this is.
I mean, it's, it's both, really. It's, it's our work plan for three years. But as a public entity, it's also shared with the public to, for us to share accountability and to sort of say, these are, these are our priorities right now. You will notice that we're focusing on these over other things, so it it really kind of serves to purposes. We do have an internal version that has more, it has sort of who's assigned to work on these things, sometimes more timeline information. More granular, the thing we need to take to tackle those projects. But this, we we try to write it with also an eye for public consumption. So that if people are curious or they want to know more about the library, this is frequently a document that they look at. So I would say both. But we could certainly, I mean, I I wonder if doing sort of a. Almost a footnote version might be helpful so that we didn't make it chunkier in its current document, but we could say, you know, you want to learn all the digital history projects. It's in the back section A and whatever next one is the section B, or sort of annotate that way. At least with the public. Version, that might be, that wouldn't be particularly complex. We probably have summaries of most of these projects that were done for other purposes, so.
Well, you could also just. Put a link to the, to the website, right, for the digital history project.
What? As long as it's not embedded, we've been on like ADA stuff. Easier.
This, my impression over the years on the board is that. This library takes the strategic planning process very seriously, and it really does drive their work. And it drives, it it, to me, it it drives the work and it drives the, it just makes things move along and and makes them accountable. I, I mean, I'm very impressed with their strategic planning process, having worked in institutions where you do it because. Every five years, someone decides we need to do it and, and then they don't pay attention. So. And I do like the format. I I appreciate, I think last time, maybe last time you didn't put in the stuff that didn't get changed. So I I think this is great. The shading is really, it's really great.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I'm just curious what the, you talk about the newspaper coverage is a survey that was conducted last month. But we don't find out what the survey found, except that it led to savings. This is newspaper coverage. Determine whether the collection meets browsing needs.
I think it was going to be revisited this fall, right? And maybe there would be. I think I remember reading that, that it, that same investigation of newspaper reading is going to be revisited to see before dispositions are finally made. I can't get it now. Now I can't find it, but I recall.
Item four.
Okay.
That's the first of the studies.
Again, it's not a major thing. I just, if if for a reader of this, you think, what were the results of that survey that led to savings? Are you cutting out some of the newspapers?
Yeah, like, because some newspapers cost less than a hundred dollars per an annual subscription. Some costs more like eight hundred dollars per annual subscription. And so looking at the June study, we identified a couple of papers that had almost no use that that month, that costs a significant amount of money. In terms of what a newspaper costs, but not in terms of what the material budget is. So I mostly wrote that as a, if we do this second course of study during the academic year and we see similar numbers, then we may see. These are our significant savings in in this newspaper budget.
We could add some details there.
Actually, I had one on is page twelve. It is the first objective, one percent community aspirations, where it says in collective, in collection services at the bottom of the page. Selectors track purchases of new print items that met diversity audit parameters. I guess I would like to know a little bit more about what audit parameters are, either in an addendum or something. Because it's saying young adult and children's materials met or exceeded the goal, but twelve percent of new title purchases met the parameters. I guess that just. It's just like a little more clarification on what the parameters were and.
I, and I, I don't know what month we, we did it, but we did our own in-house diversity audit of our young adult collection, and our staff set up some parameters using. A variety of either socioeconomic status or religious, different. Different parameters on what it need, and we tried to use those parameters in our purchasing to see what we could match up with. Sometimes it's very difficult to do when you're doing with a publication announcement, there might be nothing.
Right, right.
Be like, this new author has a new book and then we bought it and we didn't identify it at that point. And I think from doing this for the year, there was a lot of issues with using those parameters and applying them because our selection process doesn't sometimes. Worked out, we have a lot of things that are automatic order, like.
Right.
Or, so we're gonna look back and see. We can do subject headings or use any other cues that we use on our records to see if our purchasing, the way that we were doing it was. Was the right way, and it's not, there's some holes in it, and if you're good for a year, it's not working very well for frequenting.
And that's like in relationship to the audit that you used Ingram for.
Yes.
Right, that was like an in-house, like that's your current collection.
Yeah, we did our own in-house audit where we touched every single book in the young adult collection and we actually, and not me, myself. And. And really worked to see, reading reviews about those books, it took hours and we could only do it because we were closed.
Right.
And so then we hired Ingram to do one of our entire print collection, and theirs was just not comparative. To the quality of our in-house one, to the degree where we're not entirely sure what to do with those results, because they're really compared. So we tried to apply the work that we put into our young adult fiction in-house audit to purchasing materials, but there was also.
I see, I see. I'm assuming, I guess, here's nerdy. I'm assuming Ingram is looking mostly at subject headings.
Yes.
Okay.
Baker and Taylor has a product.
Right, I've used the Fallout one.
Yeah.
Like, I regularly use the Fallout one.
They use purpose material or purpose. And.
So you're at the mercy of your subject headings.
Yes. The other avenue that we're thinking of is, we, a couple of staff members went to an innovative conference and they found how to use your own catalog to turn this for that. But we're gonna have to do some subject heading work to get it to be.
Sure.
The way that we want it to be. So there's some exciting things in the future that I think. We just have some, a little bit of. Start work.
Can I answer? Yeah, no, that was really helpful. I was doing the same thing in a small, much smaller scale, and so I'm just curious.
Just needs a diverse approach.
Well.
It sounds like you have at least one objective for the next strategic plan already in place.
Yeah, that's the whole.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as I update subject heading, I keep updating subject headings too, so your work will never be done.
But don't get discouraged.
Other comments about the strategic plan? Okay, we're not required to vote on that, so this is the end of one fiscal year, so there'll be one more finale for this plan. Okay, a policy review, the the bylaws. The committee did do its work, but not, just not quite the very last step, which was to communicate to Jen that. It needed to go out ten days before the board meeting, so according to, according to the bylaws, changes to the bylaws have to have. Been sent to the board ten days before the meeting, so we're gonna vote on the bylaws in August. However, they are included here, so if, if you've looked at them and have comments. We have plenty of time to get them incorporated, otherwise we'll, we'll bring it up for a meeting for a vote in August. The three main things were to address electronic participation because we've gotten a little, I don't know, it never was really an issue before. That big of an issue before COVID, and then COVID kind of changed the world, and so we wanted to address that, and we wanted to address. The public comment time. Generally, public comment is is a non-issue. It, every once in a while feels like it's gonna be an issue so far in my tenure. It has not, but. The city council went to a big rules and regulations revision of its policies and stuff. And so we sort of used some of their, their things. What was the other, there was one more. Um, what was the other? There was one more. Things, the definition of quorum, you know, I was at there's something more important than that. It may be, maybe changing the definition of quorum because we don't always have a full nine-member board. So I don't know if people have looked at it or not. If you have comments, please offer them. Otherwise, we'll revisit this in August. Um, okay. So then we're down to item four, part D, and that's the city's new policy for bereavement re.
Yep. See, um, put out and adopted a new, it's a expansion of where we, we use of the state parents to include. The actually representations are excited and saw, um, I don't see any changes as need to be made. It was a positive. Thanks for all staff, um, and would recommend that it be um, approved for the board, that we can adapt it as a, as a library policy.
So I, I move that we adopt this as library policy. Second. Fall in favor? Um, moving on. The another COVID fallout was a disruption of our regular practice of holding a board dinner generally in August. Um, I wasn't even sure if this was something we did every other year or something we did every year. It seems, Robin remembers that we did it every year, just that we haven't done it for two years. I think it's even more than that. It seems like we have some scheduling challenges. It might be three years.
I think we had ours.
Been a while.
Yeah, when, when we. Did we, insane birds back then, I don't think.
Well, that, so, did you go to one?
Yep.
Yeah, twenty nineteen. It's been a while. Okay, so twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, so two years where you didn't do it. So. I guess the, the, do we want to resume the board dinner? And then if people would wanna weigh in on um, what would be an appealing um, venue or?
So, I just want to comment, this is not a board, this was not a board dinner, just for us to have a meal together, it was to acknowledge on people who had come off the board and to get to know people, new people that come on. So it was a chance to have conversations beyond just sitting there. Uh, but we had a lot of people leave the board who gave lengthy terms of who are in the room right now.
And also it includes um, the, the staff, not, not the entire staff, right? Just the, the managers. Yeah, the coordinator staff. And spouses. Um, it has in the past been a um, basically everybody pays their own share. Except for new people and people who are, have rotated off the board. So those people, um, we pick up their, their share. It has most often been at a restaurant. Which was really easy when Susan's, I was here and her son owned the restaurant. So we, we need to find a, we would need to find a venue um, that would, you know, hold, I don't know, how many people usually?
Well, we've done different venues. We've done one twenty-six, we've done it in where it was Atlas and it's now a different place. We've done it in Bricks. So we've done it, or one twenty-six Moonbreakers, we did it in upstairs part. So we've done it a lot of different, it's not just the one that his son owns.
So, uh, am I right in assuming that this is something that would appeal to people to, to reinstitute this practice? Okay, well then, um, I guess elsewhere, you and I and others can get together and figure something out. I don't, I don't know if we can manage this by August. It may have to be.
Well, I think one of the challenges we had in the past is sometimes people are still traveling in August too. And so it got hard, just because a lot of people still think of that as part of the summer. And so attendance got tricky, maybe, maybe not being able to organize it by, organize it by August is not necessarily an all bad thing.
And how about, how about timing? Is it best for people to do it after the board meeting? Or would it be better to do it on a Saturday afternoon or sometime where you didn't? You know, if the meeting runs till six thirty and then you have to, I mean, I don't know.
Then the staff come back too. It was, right, they have to come back.
Well, we can, we can get together and, and work out some details and maybe um, I can maybe if we can make some progress elsewhere, I can send out a a message and get some feedback.
So just, I know I'm just being a little bit of a, a, a annoyance on this, but I just want to make sure we think about the fact that we didn't, well, we didn't for a couple of years. There are a few people that rotated off that perhaps we should include, not just the very last people. You know, just COVID stopped us from including people over a longer period.
That, that.
Yeah.
Monique and John and who was the other one that rotated off?
Who?
Kelly.
Kelly.
Yeah, but she didn't rotate off with Monique and John though. There was another one, but she'd be, cause she's with me, she's in our except she left a year early. She, cause Claire replaced her.
Huh?
Daniel was here briefly.
Yeah, but there's another one. There's John and Monique and there was another.
Yeah, this is going back. Just to be inclusive.
We'll go back and look.
Yeah, okay.
It's been a couple of years.
Yeah, it's been a few years.
Oh, Wes.
Oh, Wes, of course. Wes, Wes was a fill-in for somebody.
We never celebrate with us. I think that's important.
Okay.
Since our memories are so long, maybe we.
Okay. Um, staff reports. Elsewhere, you're up first.
Yeah, well, I feel kind of, one, I've addressed stuff this month, I felt like, um, up to have a development position, um, and they live on both all the jobs. You do not get updates on applications until the position closes. So I've got nothing to do instead of there. Um, we're working on the telesemining in front of the work schedules to, to, and be as clear as possible from the implementation of staff of how this may or may not work at the library. Um, then there'll be more about that next month, we hope. Um, the only thing that I have to add to this is I've started to receive a few, let's say four or five community member questions about monkeypox at the library. And if we are making the adjustments thus far, if we have set benchmarks for when we might consider changing practices. Um, my response so far has been, of course, we're actively watching and ready to respond if there were to be um, county or state or federal, you know, suggestions. Like, like, what we could do, but at this point, we are, we're mostly um, watching the progression and, and paying attention to, to the news about what's happening. Um, so I do think people are attuned to that and will maybe be expecting some kind of um, feedback, answer it to be clearer messages about exactly how it's spread and what the dangers are, but um, that's otherwise, I'm happy to answer questions about anything on my report.
Um, I, under library coordinator development position update, um, you said you'd like to include a trustee in some part of the interview process. As the details are finalized, you'll reach out. If anybody here is, would really want to do that, please let me know so that when he does reach out, I don't overlook someone who would really wanna do it. Okay.
I think there's a couple ways that could manifest. We're, we're thinking about having a presentation as part of the um, part of the process. If we do that, we really could invite the entire board. The caveat would be, we'd, we'd really need people who could be at all. So that would probably call the group a little bit right there. Um, but if that doesn't feel like enough involvement or you're about to be differently involved, you know, we haven't, we haven't started to schedule interviews yet, so there's some flexibility there.
Okay, well, when you, when you're ready to um, ask, then let me know and I'll reach out to, to the board.
Ask a question. I wanna ask a question and I'm not sure my timing's right. Could have been down and comments later, but um, how extensive was the fire in Cedar Rapids Library? And is there anything we can do that? Reach out.
I reached out to Dara and sort of said, hey, like, sorry to hear about this. Uh, it sounds like it was that all systems worked as designed, that other, um, sprinklers only went off where they should have. It sounded like there was no, no water damage to books is what we hear right now. But I don't know about smoke damage and things like that, so.
My, if this is the right time to ask a couple of just general library questions. Is it appropriate for us to reach out to the, to Aim Cedar Falls Library?
We've talked about that, um, to sort of decide what is appropriate.
Yeah, I don't know what's appropriate. It's just.
I mean, I.
It's the library community.
I, I guess.
Just individually.
Conclusion is we could sign a card from.
I don't have a recommendation. I just, when I saw that their library is marking, you know, outside the building.
Yeah.
They're, they're forcing that identity.
I actually was thinking that tomorrow afternoon I could drive home and drop off a flower.
Maybe that's all it needs to be. I don't know.
Something, uh, it's, it's so hard to know what
Yeah.
Would be, having, I guess, just knowing that there's some support there, that there was anything about them. But we'll.
Yeah, I, I don't know what's appropriate. So I wasn't making a recommendation. I just was wondering if there's anything. Do you even know what I'm talking about?
No.
Go for it.
Um, the, the, um, state park, she, what happened? The, there was a, a family that was killed and the, the woman was a library worker at Cedar Falls Public Library. Uh, it sounded like she was doing some exciting initiatives and really had sort of found her place and, and everything was, things were going great and so it was, uh, it felt very, uh, poignant, not just being part of the larger community, but um, having that be a loss in the library world. Um, and it's, it's a difficult place to know what's the appropriate support to give because you know, we, there's a lot we can't do for you, but just, I guess to know that, um, I mean, honestly, food is a very common backroom gift. We know libraries like that, um, they, they be taking some, some backroom treats and flowers and a card that says our condolences, um, that we could sign from the library and the board and but I, I think this will be a this is the trauma on top of, um, you know, a lot of whatever stress that's been going on. And, um, and lots of connections. I mean, we'll, we have people on our staff who've got presentations in the back room. But I, I'll do, I'll figure something out tomorrow.
And I, I don't wanna tell you I have an answer. I don't, I just was wondering if there's a way to be supportive.
Um, I do realize, I did not really explain why the study on burnout, uh, or library.
I was going to ask.
So I included that because I went back and forth on it. That was released at ALA after sort of a lot of lead up, um, before.
The study on trauma, is that what you're?
Um, and it's really gotten a lot of, um, a lot of press in the library world. Uh, it feels like you know, pretty major entities in libraries have, you know, picked it up, have looked to it, have talked about it, have talked about how it's, you know, it resonates with how they feel. Um, and I think it's important because I don't know, for the last maybe year, it feels like when you pick up a trade publication, there's so much about how library jobs are changing, how morale is, is, is terrible, how um, is this worker exploitation to expect people to work with mentally ill customers? Is it? There's this buildup of dialogue around sort of mental health and should staff be sort of rising up and demanding more support around it? And I think this study did an interesting job sort of pulling a number of issues together. Um, and I, I think it's it's just important to see what that narrative looks like. Because I think you will hear it from our staff. I think you will see it when you go to ILA. I think that it, uh, that it is very prevalent in the library world right now. And I, I would hate to have someone kind of walk into those things unprepared and be thinking the library does amazing SCs that we support and we love and they're doing great work. Had to have this kind of a tidal wave of, of this more negative uh, feeling come at you. I, one of my concerns when I look at this, and I'm not questioning validity of it at all. I think it's an important part of the story, but I do feel like we're losing the thought of where does sort of the customer service there and where does the service component of our work continue to fit? Um, and I think it's, you know, it's, to me, it's about finding that balance of how we make sure staff feel supported in their whole selves, but we also are focusing on the community and doing that public facing work. So that's why I included it. I know it was long, hopefully it's given parts of, we're capable to, but, um, I I do feel like the, the trend in library land right now has been sort of that more negative narrative. And I'm hopeful that things will start to level. There were some concrete suggestions in this particular study that, um, I, I plan to include as I write a Thursday message to my staff every week. I'm gonna summarize the board meeting and then talk a little bit about the folks who have read this study, is there interest in a, a staff discussion around it? Um, do, do people wanna try to maybe look at some of those suggestions and think about? You know, there's really nothing stopping us from starting up a regional library worker support group. We could host that. We could scare hosting responsibilities. We could, um, there are things that we could do if people feel that'd be helpful. Um, so that's why I put it in that. Because I think it's within other contexts.
So, um, I don't, I, I, I know that registrations started for ILA, but I don't know, I didn't look at it. So I don't know what, if there's gonna be conference sessions relevant to the study. Are you on?
Maybe someone should say, if you, if you understand the ILA conferences and your opportunity to attend it. Maybe this is for new board members. Maybe so. I don't know who's the right person here to speak down on.
Sure, you probably know the most about how we it's kind of, it's, oh, ILA is the state library, the Iowa Library Association's conference. They have an annual conference. This year it's in Coralville, which is very convenient to us, um, location wise. And it's a, a state library conference, so it sort of covers school library, all different kinds of libraries. Um, the bigger libraries are typically more representative, just because we have more resources, there are a lot more folks to go. Um, but there is sort of, or there's always supposed to be kind of a board track as well. So programs of sessions that support board development or continuing it for, for board members. And the library, Jim, is that the library pays for board members where just, their ILA membership?
Yeah.
And also the registration to the conference?
Yeah.
So if you're interested in going, you have a window linked out to what the conference has, then you can either go for the full thing or one day of it. Um, it's a pretty good opportunity that's cloaked by, um, as, as far as onsite learning goes. Um, and in the future, you, you know, you might be inspired to submit a proposal to present there. You know, you could get involved in ILA, you could. Um, and in the future, you, you know, you might be inspired to submit a proposal to present there, you know, you could get involved in ILA, you could. Do different things as part of the organization, but the libraries are to cover, uh, your membership and if you'd like to go to the conference.
And, and when is this?
It's in October.
And how long?
Two days.
Usually, really, two, Thursday and Friday, so it's Wednesday night and then Thursday and Friday.
And it's, um, they always have an option that you can, you know, go to, to either all of it or if you just want to pick one or two days. Um, you can do the.
And there's, there'll be a trustee subdivision meeting, so you can, there, if they show up and meet trustees from other libraries. Um, if you don't know if you belong there, I just wanted to tell people, like, you belong there, the first time I went, I thought, do I really, like, is this my community? It is, I mean, go and walk through and you see the booths and you, you hear some of the, the larger topic discussions of what's going on in the library. So you hear some real tool-based presentations of what's going on in libraries, so. It's really kind of interesting, if you think I can't afford to go for this two plus days. Pick the times you want to go, I remember the first time I went, I think Susan had called a couple of us at lunch and said, you know, you're supposed to be. Going, there's a subdivision meeting and none of you guys are there, and I never even thought of it as something that I should be doing. And I was really glad I went because I, first thing you meet some of the local trustees from Coralville and Sullen and some of these other libraries, but then you meet people from across the state. Um, and it's really, it, it's worth the time, I sometimes watch, it's worth the time, even if you think you can only have an hour or something, good time to talk. It's worth the time.
And sometimes the keynote feedback this year is, is really good.
Time rushing through, um, as I was not lying.
Oh, okay.
And then as the, we, we, I, they also, maybe as a member, you also get to go to legislative days, um, you're invited to speak on behalf of libraries at that point, and you would, my leader's there, so.
But, but, you know, I think it's a trustee, when I first heard, I thought, I don't know if that's, like, what am I supposed to do about this? Um, supposed to kind of explore, you know, and find your place in it and help shape it. Because in the future, there could be a stronger trustee identity there if people actively participate, I think is another thing, we're building it, it lost momentum during COVID, big surprise. Um, it's time to rebuild.
It is really fun to meet people from across the state and see the breadth and breadth of the community.
And I, I, I think the, the big topics, discussions from experts are really intriguing. Because I just see my perspective as a user, and when you see it from people who are spending their careers doing this, it's, it's really educational.
We went, we went together when it was up in Cedar Rapids.
Yeah, once or twice, yeah, and, and we, we just, we didn't spend the night, we knew up and back, but. You don't have to spend the night just holding Coralville.
Hard to be working there.
It, it's, it's kind of fun. As I recall, the food was really, really bad the year that we went.
No matter what conference, that's like.
People say the food's bad.
I've been on the conference planning committee and that's the one that people will complain about the most. As a conference planner, I encourage you to never complain about that.
Right, and I don't even bother.
It was terrible, we, it was always terrible, period.
One conference I was at, at that hotel had good food, so.
Okay, well, actually, I went to one there, too. Only I might have still been a working librarian.
Yeah, they've been there a few times, but, this, so if you're thinking about it, Jen takes care of paperwork, she did mine today. So.
Okay, moving on to the next staff report, which would be adult services. What SWB?
I know, I just. Uh, so switch forward.
Okay.
I, I typed it out, like, this cell is too large, and, and surely I'll explain.
Okay, well, you did, it's good.
Those are all the incoming calls, and that's part of it.
I love the pictures.
Yes, I've got about eighty more of the photo, produce photos, if you want to see them. But I.
My daughter would.
They're all very good, and it will make another return to.
That is my most favorite recording of community going to the market, so. Um, all right, how about, um, next report, community and access services?
I would like to show that you, I have two photos from the book, because I loved it. Um, and the granada that some teenagers made, where it's a banana reading and has like a little show, and we'll just switch to the book and book newsletter, and there's a spotlight. And you're inviting answering questions, I'm just wanting to do the question.
I also love the pictures of all those students, their library cards, very heartwarming, they seem so excited.
Best, best working nights of my life, Sam.
Really?
Always volunteered to do these tours.
Wow. And I didn't, I didn't, so this is something that's been going on for a while.
Yes.
I didn't, did not know, it is, it's, it's really cool. Who initiated that part?
So, her what initiated it was us, um, and, uh. I kind of, kind of thought it as, you'll tell us what you need and we will make it happen. So I think we got a significantly more listeners this year than we have in the past, and really the library, we're probably not in front of the most, so. Really a lot of people have English constituents tell us what they need in the space and use the company, they tell us how this is their library. So, I'm hoping you can bring one of that with you, though, I'll be kept in the university, because why not re-crease, right?
Okay, other comments? Hey Patty?
Hi, you have an update about the book sale and sidewalk days, with a great name to start the year for my husband and the sidewalk sale at hand. Before can, we raised about eleven hundred dollars. Very, first thing to them in person, the weather was stormy, hot and humid, so we stayed in the library lobby, we didn't get to use our tents, so. People were very excited. And, and happy to answer any questions?
That's pretty good money, right?
Four hours, five hours. Very, very good start.
What's the next one, Patty's last?
I know.
It's another reason we need that dinner.
I hope the guy helped, I mean, that's a lot.
What?
I think we should have our trustees.
No, 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 no.
It's okay, well, we'll keep up that, but, yeah, thank you very, very much to all of you and I'll thank you in advance for continuing the. Very generous gifting that you do to support the library, so then hopefully going forward, we, and every board member gives. To support our lovely institutions, and great, thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, we will miss you, but I'm sure that you will. Thank you, appreciate not having to. Go after those moneys all the time, contact all those businesses.
I have not, someone told me that, you know, it's time to stop fundraising when people turn around when they see. Oh my God, so, I, I'm going out on a high note.
Oh, I think, I mean, I, I think the foundation is amazing, I, I really.
Thank you, I did look back elsewhere and suggest that maybe I should, uh, reprise my first report in two thousand four. Uh, which I looked at, we were very excited to bring in eight thousand dollars back. Oh my God, dude, period, so, the first year we raised sixty eight thousand five hundred dollars, I'm very, very excited about that. So now we averaging four hundred to four hundred fifty, whatever.
A lot of different.
Five, one and a half people, it's pretty darn good.
Yeah.
You all, that's part of that.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, I think you would say.
Um, okay, well, I had a question about miscellaneous, but, um, Ellsworth cleared that up. I don't have a president's report, I, I appreciate people all carrying on without me last month. I tried to convince the nominating committee that they made a poor choice because I missed meetings, but. Anyway, you get what you get. Um, announcements from members?
I've got one.
Yeah.
Uh, you may have noticed on the, uh, front page of the packet that, uh, see my name is no longer Derek. Uh, so, uh, I've, I've kind of determined that I identify as a non-conformant person, and as a part of that, I'd prefer to go by DJ looking forward, so.
I wondered about that. Okay, thank you, anybody else? Nope. Um, committee reports, I guess, you were in, you were mentioned, right, somehow?
Yeah. Every, uh, foundation, friends report.
Yeah. I'm not on that committee anymore. I know, but, I swear I saw your name in here.
It's a one-person committee.
I can tell you what I think about whatever you want to hear.
Ad lib.
Okay, so, well, you perform, um. So I, I guess I was, the memorandum of understanding.
Oh yeah, I do, I do have the Friends Foundation, yeah, um, so this was my first, uh, meeting with the foundation. Um, there were four new board members and it was the first in-person, in-person meeting since the pandemic had started, but they did, uh. Offer an online option as well, uh, three, uh, people attended that way. Um, and so then, with so many new people and being back in person, we introduced ourselves. Um, the committee chairs described their committee work, um, which led to us. Um, filling out a form, uh, spec- specifying how we would support the foundation and committees of interest. Um, other work included, um, conflict of interest disclosure, and then that same, um. Supplemental health insurance that is available to city volunteers. Uh, the main work was that we did approve the new corporate resolution. And, uh, we had an update from Ellsworth. And, uh, we then also had the memorandum of understanding, and so if there are questions. About that, and then our final item from the meeting was that we both recognized and expressed our, our, the foundation, the Friends Foundation's appreciation for Patty's service.
So do I need to sign this?
Yeah, so I have a copy for you after the.
Okay, okay. Um, communications. So, so, things in the packets. And then we're to the consent agenda to approve the disbursements and the meeting minutes from last month.
Um, quick edit, and the committee reports, uh, the Friends Foundation report, my name is misspelled twice.
That's all right, it happens more often than not, so. Um, so, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, or do people have changes? So moved to approve the consent agenda would be another change that I have a suggestion. Second, all in favor?
Right.
Okay, and then moving on to the agenda for next month, uh, it's like we've got the annual statistics and financials. Which, but I mean, it's a bigger discussion or could be not. We will vote on the policy, the bylaws, if you have things. If, if you haven't really looked at them and you do look at them and you have things that you think need to be clarified or changed, you might send me a message so that we could get it taken care of, uh. Before the August meeting. Uh, are we forming a finance committee? Who are you asking?
I am just asking the table.
If there is gonna be a, we make sense to start forming it because the budget work will start soon, if the budget really having to do with that, um, I don't know, whatever you think.
I think, you know, we had, historically, we had discussion about whether we really had a good sense of this and whether a couple of people could take on. I have a responsibility to really understand the financial statements.
That's right, I remember talking.
Right, and because you were abbreviating the reports and we were.
Somebody might do a deeper dive.
Right.
And they could maybe take some other, no.
Because we kind of signed off without being very thorough about looking at it, especially when we're putting together budgets and such.
Well, this is a, really a good time for a couple of reasons too, because since it'll be Jen's first full budget cycle, in a new law. She'll have a little bit different way of, of doing that from previous folks who have, so everybody's gonna come together at the end of the year.
How would it work? I mean, obviously, you all set the budget, right? I mean, you, I don't think you need a couple trustees sitting in on how much you should spend on, you know.
Excellent.
Digital.
I think a common model for finance policy on a public library board is that before a meeting. The policy committee would come here and look at the finances in the packet, that sort of, if they have any questions, we'd talk about it. They would do that more line by line look, and have, and that meeting be able to say, like, oh, can we compare this to last year's operating numbers or.
Right.
Remind me again, how does normal could do this, and when we bring it to the table, it is more sort of approval ready because you have. Your finance folks who hopefully have some interest or experience in doing that deep look, and be able to say, yeah, we have already looked at this and we've.
Okay, so, that what we'll look at next year will be FY twenty-two, next month rather, so, so if the committee would be beginning in FY twenty-three. If someone, if this interests somebody, let me know, I don't know, I don't have a sense here, people want a finance committee?
I think it makes sense to have one, I think it depends who you want and whether you think it's appropriate for a board to better understand the financial. Standing and documents, I mean, I've never seen a situation where people say, I can't wait to be on a finance committee.
So it sounds like it would be a committee to review financial reports before the board packet is distributed.
It sounds like it's about a ten-minute obligation meeting before the meeting.
I don't even know.
Have a couple of you sit down and go through that before a meeting with you.
Possibly, you know, there were issues, we could have.
Not a huge time for that.
It also could be sort of a. As either, I mean, maybe that group would have feedback of like, if you lay it out differently, people are gonna get it faster, like, try this and.
Right.
Do your news report, but also do a narrative, or stop doing the narrative, that's distracting, I mean, I think it could just be a, a smaller group discussion about what, what. They are, because they're so familiar, it won't take long to learn even the deep sort of stuff in both of it, so if anybody's like. Kind of interrupted, but I don't think I have a background knowledge. I know the news reports don't look glamorous, but they're not bad, I mean, as far as that kind of, uh, the options that are out there. It's, it's something that we could teach anybody who hasn't been personally.
Okay, so. I was somewhat interested in it, I just am worried about time coming because I'm, each, my school year starts, and that's like, I'm still a brand new teacher. And also I have a brand new baby, so, um, I have like two time constraints on my life right now, but I'd be interested. If it's, and also I completely, um, remember Tom, Tom saying that he's a numbers guy, so I would like mention it. Also, I completely um remember Tom, is it Tom saying that he's a numbers guy? So I would like mention it to not
Okay.
I'm gonna nominate him because he's not here. I remember him with his chair now. But I remember him saying that um he is he he's a numbers person. I'm not a numbers person, but I'm I have
It sounds like it would be not too much of a of a time commitment and I'm assuming it would be like a year long. Because we don't get numbers.
I mean, if somebody's miserable, we could they could swap out.
Okay, I'll work on a finance committee. Carol, are you think you need two people? Two, two or three, not more than three, because then we have a problem.
I would I would do it if there's more than one person.
Okay.
Because I we're talking about this.
Right.
Oh, yeah, we have a committee. There are a lot of things like
You're gonna take on news.
No one would volunteer.
I just had slipped my mind that we had talked about that, but 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 we have talked about it. So Claire, it sounds like it's something that you could be you could do. And then if you if it doesn't work, which if it ends up being an email thing.
Yeah, that would work great, better than like a scheduled meeting or a ten minutes before the meeting would be fine also, but I spent a whole lot of time.
Well, I was a basket case for the first two years of my first daughter's life, so I think you're
Only I can rarely commit to like a shower and getting the dishes done, so.
Hey, you've only missed one meeting when you're in labor, so.
Well, I was actually, yeah, I was actually
Yeah, I mean That's why the bylaws look at the virtual.
Okay, so I believe that we are ready to adjourn. So elsewhere, get um yeah.
I think I don't have to vote to adjourn, right?
Next.